DATV and the Greater Dayton Area League of Women Voters present, Meet the Candidates. Your chance to learn about the candidates running for office in the May election.
Hello, I'm Peggy Ann Berry. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Greater Dayton Area. I am here today with candidates running for the upcoming primary for the Dayton City Commission. The primary will take place on Tuesday, May 6. Four of the five candidates will advance to the general election, which will be held on November 11th. The candidates are Darius Beckham, Jacob Davis, Valerie Duncan, Darrell Fairchild, and Karen Wick. We will start the interviews by giving the candidates one minute to tell us about themselves and why they want to serve on the Dayton City Commission. And I will start this round with Darius Beckham. Sir?
Good afternoon, everyone. I first like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting today. It's an honor to be here. It's good to see my fellow candidates as well. As Peggy said, my name is Darius Beckham. I am the youngest son of three brothers, a lifelong Daytonian. I was raised by two blue collar working parents who really believed in doing everything in their power and working tirelessly to make sure that my brothers and I could be successful. I have two degrees from the University of Dayton. First went there for my bachelor's in political science and then went back for my master's in public administration. I've had the honor of serving two mayors in the city of Dayton. And I believe that I can bring experienced, fresh leadership to the city with three priorities: economic justice, public safety, and economic justice, public safety, and neighborhood improvement. So it's an honor to be here today.
Mr. Fairchild, would you please tell us why you want to serve the Dayton City Commission?
Sure, thank you. And likewise, want to give my appreciation for the League of Women Voters to President Corba, to you, Ms. Berry, and my fellow members of the League of Women Voters. I am currently a Dayton City Commissioner and the voters have entrusted me twice before to serve as a commissioner. And I believe I have a proven track record of doing the things that I've campaigned upon. Over those first two terms, I protected our water rights. I helped lead the effort to get a plan for the city, which hadn't been updated in over 40 years. We worked to get a plan for our housing, to increase housing. And we now get reports on our progress on demolition. Over the last couple of years, we've had $138 million of ARPA funds. And I believe we've used those well, partly because of my leadership. And so I have a track record of doing well. Besides being a commissioner, I am the chaplain manager at Dayton Children's Hospital. I'm also a father, a husband, and the proud owner of four cats.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. Okay, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It's an honor to be here today. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jacob Davis, and I'm running because I love this community. I'm the proud resident of Northwest Dayton. I'm the son of a retired UAW member, and I'm a first generation college graduate, University of Dayton alum. I'm also a lawyer and small business owner in the city of Dayton. My law firm's located in the McPherson neighborhood just outside of downtown Dayton. Before I went into private practice, I worked for the City of Dayton Human Relations Council, where I was responsible for enforcing the city's anti-discrimination ordinances and then promoting community police relations. I'm running for city commission to shake things up. I bring a unique skill set and experience to the commission. We haven't had an attorney on the commission in over two decades, and it's time to change that. My four priorities are investing our time and resources as a city in people and neighborhoods to disrupt generational poverty and bring back economic development opportunities. I hope I can earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Wick?
Good morning, everybody. Thanks to the League of Women Voters. I appreciate this opportunity. My name's Karen Wick, and I'm running for city commission because I'm committed to serving our community. For 27 years, I've run a successful business here in Dayton. I've raised both of my kids here and sent both of them to Dayton Public Schools. I've served two terms on the Dayton Public School Board. I've worked to turn big ideas into real results. I'm especially proud of our work at Welcome Stadium. Not only did this create a state-of-the-art facility for our children, it honored a rich piece of our community legacy, but also has created an economic engine that will continue to provide benefit to our community for years to come. Now, I'm ready to bring that same sense of commitment, service, problem solving, to the city of Dayton. It's time for new perspective and change. On the commission, I'll focus on three key priorities: neighborhoods, mental health, and safety. And we need to strengthen our neighborhoods through leadership internally. Third, we must invest in our businesses and continue to make sure that our entrepreneurs have the services they need through the city and our services are up to date. I'm running for city commission because... Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Duncan?
Yes, thanks for having us and hosting this League of Women Voters forum. I appreciate all your efforts in voter registration, voter awareness. My name is Valerie Duncan, and I'm a candidate for the Dayton City Commission. I will bring to the city and its residents the expertise of 31 years of service to the county and the city of Dayton. City commissioners, county commissioners, managers have relied on my expertise to give them advice on fiscal responsibility, budgeting, neighborhood improvement, economic improvement, economic development. And I will continue as a city commissioner to provide that advice to the current city commissioner, commission, and the city manager's office. I come from a labor, blue collar worker family. Both of my parents are Hispanic. And I graduated from the Dayton Public School System.
Thank you so much, Ms. Duncan. Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you all for talking about yourselves. And I will ask each question, going forward, the same question. You will have two minutes to speak to each question. And when I move on to the next candidate, I will give them two minutes to respond. And I will repeat the questions. All right, Ms. Wick, this is to start with you. Describe the skill set you bring to the position.
Thank you for the question. The skill set I bring to the position is my 27 years of operating a business in the community. I understand, I get up, I go to work, I work hard every day. I've done that for, honestly, my whole life. I'm a product of hardworking parents and have really taught me the value in, you know, we have to show up before we can do anything. I'm creative. I approach solutions through cultivating collaborative relationships and communication. I'm oftentimes an over communicator, but I don't think that that's really a possibility. I'm a relationship builder. I have, in my whole life, I understood early on when I had a paper out that the job was more than just about me in that paper. It was about cultivating relationship because it's through people and relationship and communication that we really drive work. And driving work, we have to be present. We have to be present in the workforce. We have to understand the work and know what's going on. Developing in the city, I have had a hands-on relationship with what that looks like for businesses who are trying to add on, trying to cultivate new construction, trying to create new business. I live in a neighborhood that was underserved. I've improved properties in that neighborhood, invested in the neighborhood by being there, by living there. I've invested in our schools by sending our kids there, by making sure I was involved in those spaces and those places. And that's how I'll continue to drive for work at Dayton City Commission. I think my skill set in relationship, in understanding development, in creativity, in progressiveness, and yeah, I think those make me great, those make me great qualified commissioner.
Thank you so much, Ms. Wick. Ms. Duncan, same question. Describe your skill set that you will bring to the position of Dayton City Commissioner.
Thank you for that question. Well, I'm a community advocate for the neighborhoods, for urban development, and neighborhood development. And I bring the expertise of 31 years working for the county and city. I understand budgeting, budget process, fiscal responsibility. And one of the things that the city has to pay attention to with the cuts that the Trump administration wants to do, and it's already affecting our state and county governments, is the reduction of funds. We've already had a reduction in local funding. It's called state local funds. And COVID has affected the dollar amount that we get in tax revenue. So that's going to affect our budget down the line. I also have, since July, been going on a listening tour to our community, going to different neighborhoods and festivals and listening to people's concerns and what the issues and the problems are. So that has helped me tune in to what's important to the Dayton community. And that also gives me the expertise then to focus on those issues that is important to the Dayton residents. Also, I support unions, collective bargaining. I think it's very important that we continue to support our unions and their ability to attract membership. Also, I advocate a hospital facility, some kind of medical facility. I think there's already an identification that there is a need for that. And if good sand being torn down, that really developed a big gap in our ability to provide health care.
Thank you so much, Ms. Duncan.
Thank you.
We need to move on. Mr. Davis, describe the skill set you bring to the position of Dayton City Commissioner.
Yes, absolutely, Peggy, and thank you for that question. I do bring a unique skill set, experience to the position. And I have a law and public policy background. And as I mentioned before, it's been over 20 years since we had that type of experience on the commission and the ability to do those types of things with our elected leaders. I'm also a public servant. I was previously responsible for enforcing an entire chapter of the Dayton Revise Code that pertains to housing discrimination, credit discrimination, employment and credit discrimination. So I have those skills and that experience. Maybe most importantly, I'm a small business owner in the city of Dayton. So I know the challenges that we face as a community. I know what many businesses are going through right now, where if you miss a week or you miss a couple of days of business, that your business is going to suffer and you might have to close up shop. So I totally understand that. Importantly, as a lawyer, every single day, I work with small businesses, entrepreneurs, nonprofit centers, fair housing organizations, and a variety of other clients. And I do that through both transactional services and also litigating tough cases in state and federal court, where you have to be skilled in navigating complex issues. You have to be skilled in negotiating resolutions, mediating disputes, and bringing partners together in order to get anything accomplished. And I'm able to do that. I'm a community builder. I previously oversaw the work of the Community Appeals Board here in the city of Dayton. I think that that has suffered since I left the city and certainly want to get back and look at restoring some of those protections for our residents. And then finally, leadership. I serve as the vice chair for the House of Red Board of Directors, where we work to feed any person regardless of their socioeconomic status or what they look like. And I want to continue to do those type of leadership initiatives in the city of Dayton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Fairchild, same question. Describe the skill set you bring to the position of Dayton City Commissioner.
You can say it simply this way. I aspire to be tough-minded and tender-hearted. And for 30 years, the community has been able to see me do that in a variety of ways, whether it's been leading a nonprofit, being a community organizer, being a pastor, a commissioner, or serving as the manager of chaplain services. I have seven years of experience already as a commissioner. So I understand the ins and outs of our governance and how to work collaboratively on the commission to accomplish goals. I bring strong interpersonal skills, able to relate to people from a wide variety of different walks of lives that serves me well as a chaplain, but also as a commissioner working in the community. I'm a bridge builder. I've worked consistently to overcome bridges, being a charter member of the Dayton Dialogue on Race Relations and one of the founders of the Interfaith Trilogue here in Dayton. I'm disciplined. I have a good work ethic, and I'm an analytical thinker. And I try to be fair in everything I do. People also describe me as tenacious, overcoming some personal challenges when I broke my back when I was 26 years old. But ultimately, what voters need to know, and I think particularly in this race, is about what is the vision that all the candidates have for Dayton. I've demonstrated that I have a clear vision for the city. And then that comes down to leadership, of being able to articulate that vision and then to implement that vision. And part of that leadership is also being able to work as a team. And as a team member, knowing when you need to be independent and when you need to be collaborative. And finally, I have a deep passion for my city and a deep love for my city. So those are the skills that I bring that I believe have served me well as a city commissioner, as well as prepare me for the next term.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. Mr. Beckham, same question. Describe the skill sets you bring into the position of Dayton City Commissioner.
Thank you for the question, Peggy. I believe that I bring collaborative leadership skills to this race and to the city commission. I have spent the last six years of my career both working in government and nonprofit. I've worked for both Mayor Whaley. And for the past several years, I've actually worked as the senior aide to Mayor Mims, leading various initiatives specific to youth. And most recently, the Violence Intervention Program that is underway at the city. In my experience in the nonprofit space, I've had the pleasure of working with the Omega Community Development Corporation on their board. I am currently the chair of the Omega Community Development Board. Additionally, I serve on the Montgomery County College Promise Board, as well as the Hall Hunger Initiative Board, of which I'm also chair. In these various roles, from government to nonprofit, I've truly learned how to lead, how to collaborate with a large group of individuals towards a collective vision and towards a collective goal. I've really learned how to strategize towards particular difficult decision-making. You know, it has taken, truthfully, a step-by-step process in both my government and nonprofit experience to get to where I think the community and these particular groups want us to be. So I believe I'm disciplined, I'm young, but I'm also committed to Dayton. I'm somebody who decided to stay here, decided to purchase my home here, and continues to advocate to my peers and anyone who will listen that I believe Dayton's best days are ahead, and I want to be a part of its growth. And I believe I have a lot to offer in terms of where our city can go in the future. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beckham, next question. What are your top two priorities for the city of Dayton, and how will you address them?
I think number one is neighborhood improvement. We have an amazing set of neighborhoods in this community, from historic neighborhoods to, you know, just various fabrics of community. And I believe that to really move our city forward, we've got to make Dayton a place that people want to move, a place that people want to stay, a place that people enjoy living. So I believe continuing the demolition work that we're doing, learning ways to make our streets cleaner, to continue to build more parks, to continue to create more green spaces in our city, as well as just listen to residents and really identify what they want for their particular neighborhoods. I think that is extremely key. I also think it's pivotal that we increase homeownership in the city and create more mixed income housing. Because I think data and research has shown that those types of housings are pivotal to not just creating more diverse communities, but strengthening neighborhoods. So that is key. I also believe that public safety is a matter that is a number two priority for me as well, considering that our city has experienced an increase in violent crime over these past couple of years. And, you know, we didn't sit on our hands in terms of recognizing that data. We quickly mobilized a violence intervention task force to begin doing the work of going out into these conflicts and mediating them and intervening. So I had the pleasure of leading the peace campaign up until I was in the mayor's office. I recently resigned to enter this race. But I do believe that priority is key to making our community safer. And I look forward to that initiative going to the finish line.
Thank you, Mr. Beckham. Mr. Fairchild, what are your two top priorities for the city of Dayton? And how will you address them?
Yeah, when you asked the question, I kind of chuckled because I remember a conversation I had with Commissioner Abner Orick when he was commissioner and I was a young man in Belmont. And he asked me point-blank, what's the most important service that the city of Dayton provides? And I hemmed and hawed and gave a couple of answers. And finally, he gave the one that comes from experience, which is that it's the service that the citizen needs at that moment. So if you're a person who, you know, needs the fire department, it's the fire department. If it's an ambulance, it's EMT. If it's police, it's police. And going through 2019, we knew that our water department, when the water was out, were actually first responders in that moment, the airport. So the first priority of mine is to make sure that we have a city manager who's competent, who's able to run the city, and to keep all of our basic services in place. Having said that, people know my track record. I have been leading the charge on neighborhoods now for, you know, over seven years. And so in my tenure, we were able to get the vision plans for all four quadrants of our city. And now we have a comprehensive plan. We have housing work, working with Commissioner Turner-Sloss. We were able to get rights for residents, both homeowners and renters. And we were able to allocate those ARPA dollars to really aggressively go after demolition and to start to clean up some of the blight. One of the things I advocated was monthly reporting, which we are now getting. And one of the things that that has revealed is that blight, as I kind of sense, but now we've got data, is very expensive. We're excited. We had a report today that we only had one fire pile this month, which is down from what's typically, we have three. Three fire piles.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Fairfield. I'm sorry, Fairchild. Mr. Davis, what are your two top priorities for the city of Dayton? And how will you address them?
Thank you, Peggy. My two top priorities are neighborhoods and youth engagement. Talk about both of those plans. How to build healthy neighborhoods. We've got a lot of work to do on this front. I think it starts with building healthy, active neighborhood organizations because we certainly need people on the ground involved in telling us their needs. As a city, we need to make sure that we're meeting with neighborhoods more. It's not enough just to meet with the neighborhood presidents quarterly. We should be meeting with our neighborhoods on a monthly basis, making sure that we're giving them the support that they need. Next, this is so simple, but it's shocking that it hasn't been done yet. We need to establish a litter removal program in our neighborhoods. We know that downtown Dayton gets litter, trash, and debris removal, both through some work with the city of Dayton and then also with the Downtown Dayton Partnership. But often, we find that our neighborhoods are left to fend for themselves without the resources they need on this important issue. We've got to put city resources into cleaning and maintaining our neighborhoods, which will also cut down, I believe, on illegal dumping. And we need to enforce our dumping laws. Finally, I think for our neighborhoods, we have to have a sound plan and policy that prioritizes beautification, development, sustainability of neighborhoods. And we've got to be intentional in zoning and planning to help our neighborhoods move along. With respect to youth engagement, we have, I think I hear it most often, we have a lack of recreational opportunities, a lack of programming, and really a lack of partnership between the city of Dayton and Dayton Public Schools. We need new internship and apprenticeship programs between the city of Dayton and Dayton Public Schools. We've got to make sure that youth and students have safe and secure housing. And that starts by holding absentee landlords accountable and enforcing the housing code. And then I want to adopt the 15-minute city plan to make sure that every single resident is within a 15-minute walk or bike ride to a grocery store, school, health service, and other amenities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Wick, same question. What are your two top priorities for the city of Dayton? And how will you address them?
Thank you for the question. My two top priorities are safety and development. I think that everything kind of fits into those pockets in our community. On the safety end, addressing mental illness. We need to make sure that our relationships with our community partnerships, a lot of those funds are funneled through, different organizations are being utilized correctly so that our homelessness and our mentally ill people have spaces and places to go. There aren't enough facilities, and we need to make sure that we do what we can to build on those facilities so people are safe. I think crime, that reduces crime. And also, I mean, the cleanliness piece is very important in our neighborhoods. It's such an easy thing to do. But I do think that we need to equip our neighborhood organizations with the tools to do that. And that is building neighborhood, a lot of these neighborhood organizations from the ground up. I think that at the core of safety, a lot of that is poverty. And we know that our community is faced with a lot of poverty. So we need to make sure that there are living wage jobs out there. I've done a lot of great work with Premier Health through my work with Dayton Public School Board, our Career Pathways Plan that have been developed, both at Meadowdale High School. We have a new agriculture plan that is going in at Dunbar High School. There's a lot of great stuff going on in Dayton Public Schools that will continue to cultivate higher-paying jobs for these citizens of tomorrow. So super excited to continue that work there. Along development, we have to create experiences wherever we are. Our neighborhoods need better experiences. Our downtown need better experiences because that's what continues to bring people out and about. I think that we do that through relationship building with our entrepreneurs, with our business owners who are cultivating those businesses, and with our development. I'm super excited to have the opportunity to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Duncan, same question. What are your two top priorities for the city of Dayton? And how will you address them?
Well, thank you for that question. Yes, it can be an overwhelming responsibility to address. It's kind of complicated, and it's all interwoven. And of course, the first number one priority is our neighborhoods. And there's a lot that is required when you say neighborhoods. One of the key things about stabilizing neighborhoods is our housing stock. Now, we have been addressing through various programs, ARPA monies and this last, past issue six monies, the blight in our neighborhoods. We are getting to it, but not as quickly as possible. Fire piles, yes, we still have them. We addressed some last year. We're addressing some this year. Boarded up houses, we still have over 10,000 boarded up houses. So how do you get to these real important, these real important problems? Because that affects our stability, the neighborhood's stability. It can attract crime. It can attract crime. Homeless people use those vacant houses to, to live in and then that starts the fire and then we have another fire pile. So the homelessness, the mentally ill, the, our seniors who lack the funds of fixing up their houses, affordable housing, lack of affordable housing for seniors and for low and moderate income. We lack so many things, but we have the funds. We have the funds, they're available. We just have to fine tune the, where they're being funneled to.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Ms. Duncan, another question. I will direct the last question to you. How do you propose to assure that Dayton continues to be a welcoming city?
Well, thanks for that question. We're, we're, have been working on our downtown downtown area, our town, downtown district, our Oregon, Oregon district. And we, we need to continue to provide economic development and to, to our downtown. The people that live downtown are more on the higher-end scale. And that, that is good. And but at the same time, we need to provide the, all the resources that the downtown development has to our neighborhoods. And, and that would also benefit all of Dayton. There's tax abatement for hotels and apartment buildings. And that same tax abatement should be available to, to residents, residential apartments, residential housing. And so, and then we have a market. We have, because of the highways, we have seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-five. And so we need to promote ourselves. We need to promote our economic development. We have the airport. And so one, one of the things that was advocated a long time ago by Mr. Kundi, or one of our former city managers, was the ninety-minute market. We need to promote that. We, you know, we have water, we have highways, we have an airport. And promote what Dayton has. We have an Air Force Base. And these are some of the things that, through the Chamber of Commerce, through citywide development and other development entities, we can bring together a, a program and a marketing strategy that we attract large corporations and, and factories.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duncan. We'll need to move on. Ms. Wick, how do you propose to assure that Dayton continues to be a welcoming city?
Thank you for the question. Through my work at Coco's, my, my business, I've always taken space in someplace on the menu, the corner menu, to offer people opportunity to learn about different organizations, different programs. I think always capitalizing on those moments in time when we have opportunities to communicate, to keep people curious about things. My diversity in opening and an open and affirming city, we, through the work at Dayton Public Schools, we have, we, we had a program called Welcome Belmont. You know, a lot of our students are immigrant families. We continue to build on programs like that. Last year, two years ago, under leadership, we opened a new international school, was Residence Park, which is really a successful organization. And a lot of our families are benefiting from having focused programs that intentionally work on helping them cultivate skill sets as they enter our community. I think that my work with, again, Dayton Public Schools and community resource agreements to make sure that businesses have opportunities and these are businesses of immigrant families that are opening businesses, that we continue to provide opportunity wherever we are, sitting in a city commission. I would welcome the opportunity to delve into that work more deeply. I am a very, I love our diversity in our community. Our diversity in the world is what's going to continue to help us grow and become, and it's a critical, important piece of the work. I think along those lines too, it's always about building relationships and having conversations. So I'll continue to drive to have those conversations with people from within our community, people who are new to our community, and businesses that we want to bring to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wick. Mr. Davis, same question. How do you propose to assure that Dayton continues to be a welcoming city?
Thank you, Peggy. This is a great question. I think it starts with our neighborhoods. Neighborhoods matter. Building the infrastructure and putting city resources into doing that is important because it's all about knowing your neighbors, working with your neighbors, and making sure that the neighborhood has what it needs to succeed. So I would start there. Second, we have to support, welcome Dayton. We have an organization in the city administration whose sole responsibility is to make sure that we are a welcoming and inclusive environment for all individuals who come into our community, and we need to continue to support them. Additionally, there's things that we can do from an ordinance perspective to make sure that people feel welcome. Some of the most progressive cities in the country have ordinances that protect certain groups of people. And oftentimes in those cities, we see with certain ordinances that they'll have between fifteen to thirty protected classes in those ordinances. Depending on the ordinance here in the city of Dayton, we're usually around seven to twelve or thirteen protected classes. And I certainly think we have some things that we can do here to make sure that other groups of people have protections. And if they run into issues, they can make a complaint with the city. For example, I proposed a fair chance ordinance for those who are returning into society after previously being incarcerated. We should give those individuals some protections in the employment and housing context so that they have a fair and equal opportunity to live and enjoy Dayton, just like all of us do. And then lastly, just making sure that students feel safe and supported, that they have the resources they need and that they believe that not only can they go to school here, but they can stay here and make good progress towards a career and have economic freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Fairchild, same question. How do you propose to assure that Dayton continues to be a welcoming city?
Well, first we need to give recognition to the Welcome Dayton Program. And it was one of the first in the nation, and it's been a model for welcoming communities across the nation. And so the first thing is to continue to support and provide the resources necessary to maintain that program within the city. Some of the successes that they've been able to do is to bring people together so that they can build those relationships and people who come from different cultures, different ethnicities are able to meet and get to know one another and discover those common values that they have, that people want to have a place, a safe place to live and a place to raise their family and all those values. One of the things I think about is the longest table that came about and citizens were able to sit, on one occasion, all the way across the Third Street Bridge, sitting with people from different neighborhoods, learning about them. And that has paid dividends because in our annual survey, we have found that people are more open to living next door to someone who's different from them. In the midst of that work then, we also need to pay attention to what's happening with decisions at the federal government and be working with our congressional delegation to advocate for the residents in Dayton who are here contributing to our community, working jobs, raising families, taking care of their homes, so that they are able to, to maintain, being able to do that and being a vital part of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. Mr. Beckham, how do you propose to assure that Dayton continues to be a welcoming city?
Yes, thank you for the question, Peggy. I think first and foremost, we have to strengthen our neighborhoods. You know, it would be, it would be inappropriate to say that Dayton is a welcoming city without making sure that we have a place for new residents to, to actually plant roots in our community. So I think it comes, it comes down to first strengthening our neighborhoods and ensuring that every Dayton resident has a safe and stable neighborhood to live in. I would agree with my other fellow candidates in terms of supporting Welcome Dayton. It's a phenomenal program that we all can be proud of, which has really given Dayton a status as a certified welcoming city. So I think we have to continue to monitor the progress and the best practices to maintain that program. Additionally, I think it also comes down to economic inclusion. As we're welcoming new residents, as we're providing a safe and affordable housing for new residents, I think we also have to ensure that they can succeed in the workforce here. And that comes down to, you know, the distribution of economic resources, supporting job training and workforce development, so that every resident who wants to work and, and wants to contribute to our community can do so. And then also creating equity in our leadership. There are various phenomenal organizations across our community, from both nonprofit, from community-based organizations as well. And I think we have to continue to champion diversity across all of those organizations so that the leadership across our city also reflects the residents and diverse people that live in the city of Dayton.
Thank you, Mr. Beckham. In closing, we would like to provide each candidate with one minute for a closing statement, and I will begin with Ms. Duncan.
Well, thank again for the League of Women Voters to give all the candidates for the Dayton City Commission this opportunity. I'm Valerie Duncan, I'm the candidate for the city of Dayton City Commission race. And I bring to the city my expertise, my knowledge, and my experience. I continue to understand what the issues are by listening to our, our residents. And I've gone to different, different activities and neighborhood groups. And I, I want to become the listening ear for all of the city of Dayton. We have to be inclusive and we have to include all of the neighborhoods. What, whatever their income level or status is. And we want to lift everybody up. That's what human rights is all about, lifting everybody up.
Thank you so much, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Fairchild.
Yes, thank you for the question. I think it's fair to say over the last four years, we have managed responsibly the hundred and thirty-eight million dollars we had of ARPA funding. But I also think it's fair to say that we have not been ambitious and bold in our vision for the city. And I think as voters look at this election, they should be thinking about what is the vision that people have for the city? Where do we want to go? Who's articulating that vision? And how does that bring other people along, whether it's businesses or new residents? And I believe I have that vision, a vision that works to invest in our neighborhoods, to support our young people, to create a space where everyone has the opportunity to live and to work, to learn and to live their best lives. And so I invite you to look for that vision and find the one that's compelling for you and makes you want to be a part of what Dayton is and can be.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. Ms. Wick.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I believe it's time for new perspective in helping lead our city, some fresh vision and thinking for our city. I'm running for city commission because Dayton is positioned for amazing opportunities that will benefit all of our residents. And we can't afford to let those opportunities pass us by. We need to focus on building bridges through communication and collaboration. That's how we'll continue to retain amazing city staff and give our residents and businesses the tools they need to thrive. I mentioned earlier that paper route that I had when I was a child growing up and how it was about more than that paper. It was about serving community. The paper was one part of it. The other part of it was communicating with my customers all the time to understand what they needed, what the city needed, what we all need. I'll continue that paper route. I had, as a little girl, might seem a long way from the city commission. But the lessons I learned then will still guide me today, guide me every day of my life. I show up every day, I work hard, and I never forget who I'm serving. Same dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wick. Mr. Beckham.
Thank you, Peggy. You've been a great host. I appreciate today. I believe Dayton is at a crossroads. I think we need bold, forward-thinking leadership that's new and fresh with a deep commitment to, I think, where we want to go. And what I would like to see, my vision for Dayton, is a more equitable city, a stronger Dayton where our neighborhoods are safe and thriving, where our economy is growing and energized, and where young people can see and achieve their full potential. That is what I have spent the last six years of my public service career doing, working towards that vision, and I think together we can actually create that real change in our community. So I'm thankful to be a candidate in this year's election. And I look forward to hopefully having the opportunity to help lead this community.
Thank you, Mr. Beckham. And Mr. Davis, we'll end with you.
Thank you, Peggy, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. It's been a great opportunity and experience. My name's Jacob Davis and I'm running for this seat because I love the community and I love community building. I'm a lawyer, I'm a small business owner, and I'm also a community builder. I do bring a new vision and a fresh perspective. We can't get different results if we continue to do the same things over and over again. My core priorities are investing our city's time and resources into disrupting generational poverty, improving economic opportunities for all people in our city, and then most importantly, creating new economic development opportunities. I'm an independent voice for the commission. I'm a fresh face with fresh ideas. I'm also someone who's skilled in navigating complex issues and getting things done, and I hope I can earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, all of you, for participation today. Good luck in your campaigns. The League of Women Voters encourages all candidates to run an issues-oriented campaign. Our goal is to educate the voting public and to strengthen our elective political process. Again, the primary election will be held on Tuesday, May sixth. Early voting will begin on April eighth at the Board of Elections Office. You may request an absentee ballot by visiting ohioSOS.gov or by calling the League of Women Voters. We are happy to help. However you decide to vote, your opinion matters and helps make our democracy work. Thank you.